Good evening, Council. I'm Lori Markle with the Land Use Administration Division of the Department of Planning. I'm also Secretary to the City's Planning Commission. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I think probably this case is submitted.
Maybe you just want to give us a verbal. I think you're already familiar with this. So why don't you just give us a verbal?
Okay. It's ready. Just in time. To the subject properties of the special use permit are located on the northeast corner of Seminary Avenue and Melrose Avenue. Across Melrose Avenue is the Union Theological Seminary. Together, the properties are just under a acre and a half. There is a single-family dwelling that fronts on Seminary Avenue and a carriage house that was used as institutional housing for the seminary from 1949 to 2002, which fronts on Melrose Avenue. The property is in the city's R1 Single Family Residential zoning district, which permits, does not permit multifamily dwelling uses. I would like to point out that both the lots currently meet the minimum lot area and lot width requirements of the R1 district and could both be used as separate single-family detached dwellings as a matter of right without any further zoning approval. In 1949, the Board of Zoning Appeals authorized the conversion of the carriage house for institutional housing for the seminary. The seminary owned the properties, both properties until 2002. And with the 2002 change in ownership, the multifamily use of the carriage house was no longer authorized. However, it has been used by the current owners illegally since they purchased the property in 2003. Prior to the sale of the property, by the seminary, the property was originally configured as three lots. You can see the lot lines vaguely here. The seminary, in preparing the property for sale, reconfigured the lots to create two separate lots, both to be used as single-family detached dwellings. The lot lines, it has been mentioned in planning commission meetings and land use that the lot line is not ideal, that it's kind of a strange lot line. I would like to mention that it doesn't, it would not have to be configured like that as long as they meet the minimum lot area and lot width requirements in the R1 district. It could be reconfigured. The special use permit would authorize the use of the carriage house as a four-unit multifamily dwelling to be leased to the general public. It would require that the two lots be combined within sixty days of approval with the idea being that the, that as long as the carriage house is used for multifamily, the properties would be conveyed together and the ownership of the, the single-family dwelling would be responsible for the entire property. However, if the special use permit was ever abandoned, the properties could be resubdivided at that point, as long as they could comply with the underlying zoning. The ordinance would limit the occupancy of units to no more than one occupant per bedroom or no more than five total. There's one unit has two bedrooms and the rest are one-bedroom units. It would require the typical zoning requirement of one off-street parking space per each dwelling unit for a total of five parking spaces. The five parking spaces is the minimum in zoning ordinance before you have to get, they have to be paved and delineated and lit. So the ordinance would authorize the parking to remain gravel and unliniated and unlit. However, it would require it to be screened from the adjacent property. The ordinance would also require that the kitchen counters be replaced. The property is located in the city's single-family load density designation in the land use map of the city's master plan. This land use category recommends single-family detached dwellings as a primary land use. It recommends the R1 to R5 zoning districts as appropriate for these areas. The R1 to R5 only permit single-family detached residential and do not permit even one accessory dwelling unit and an accessory structure. There's also a specific language in the master plan related to the phasing out of multifamily uses in the North Plank District. One of the reasons given for this recommendation is that several neighborhoods in the North District have faced decline as large homes have been converted to single and two-family uses to multifamily uses. After holding a public hearing held up City Planning Commission, the City Planning Commission found that the proposed special use permit to authorize the four units in the carriage house would not conform to the single-family load density in the phasing out of multifamily uses in the city's master plan. They found out that carriage house assumed the same legal status as all the other carriage houses in the Ginner Park neighborhood when the seminary use was discontinued and granting a special use permit could possibly set a precedent for the granting of other special use permits for carriage houses, both in the Ginner Park neighborhood as well as the rest of the city. In this, the potential increase of density with the granting of a special use permit would contradict the goals for the load density, single-family development as set forth in the city's master plan and would be detrimental to the future of the neighborhood. They also discussed covenants and deed restrictions. There, there was concern about the property being resubdivided at some point in the future. And the planning commission found that granting a special use permit is an incentive to keep the properties together was not the appropriate way to keep the properties together. The only way to guarantee that they would stay together would be to put a deed restriction or covenant on the property. Further, they found that a financial hardship or granting a financial incentive to a property owner does not meet the criteria for granting special use permits and could be detrimental to the general welfare of the community involved. The planning commission voted five to two to not recommend approval for another special use permit. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know there's members of the public here that wish to speak to this item as well.
Ms. Markle. The lots in the east of this property, most from the air under a mild conditions multifamily. Is the adjoining property to the east multifamily?
I think, adjoining property to the east is multifamily.
And it's in the single-family load density lot?
It is designated a single-family load density in the city's master plan. However, it is zoned for multifamily use in the zone R48.
And how many other carriage houses in this area were granted to that institutional housing?
There were other carriage houses that were owned by the seminary. To my knowledge, this is the only one that was granted a special variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
This will be your one?
To my knowledge, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Do you have any?
Ms. Markle. Approximately every carriage house is already in this community of this R1.
Citywide, I have, we don't have the staff or main tower to, to do that study, but we did do a very informal survey of Seminary Avenue between Melrose and West Seminary, or Seminary splits. And there was approximately seventy carriage houses that would meet the minimum building height requirements for conversion to dwelling use.
And PowerPoint question two, those seventy carriage houses, how many of those carriage houses were part of the original properties that were owned by the seminary and rented out to students in the seminary?
At least two.
Any other questions, Ms. Markle? All right, thank you. At this time, we are holding a public hearing. Could I speak to those who wish to speak in favor? And those who wish to speak in opposition? Okay, we're adding one to ask. Is, um, do this again, is it in favor, how many do we have? All right, we have a total of thirty minutes. You may each speak, but if one person speaks for the full three minutes, you're impressed with all of that, and everyone's not going to get a chance to speak. So please keep your comments free, okay? Thanks, I just want to ready the chairs. Now, so if you want to add this, this is.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Dodson. I live at 3501 Seminary. And we just wanted to offer you a little insight, a little background to the actual position. When we did purchase the property, we were unaware that it was set aside as a single-family residence if a carriage house had really never been a standalone home. And all the apartments were intact when we purchased it. Our tax bill said that it was converted R4 when we purchased it. So even when we inquired with the zoning board, they told us verbally that we were grandfathered. So we end up here in it verbally. But once we realized that the property could be separated at any time without any additional approval, we wanted to take the opportunity to make this legal and we also wanted to take the opportunity to use the S U P to protect the property for generations beyond us. So we came up with a strategy. We recognized that the property is large and in fact, the line could be redrawn and no one would have to come in front of you to ask permission, as we thought perhaps was the case. And there's enough square footage on the property to actually make three lots. And so we were very concerned that down the road, the property actually would be subdivided and perhaps have been filled and would absolutely lose its historic integrity. So we created a strategy for the S U P that the property could, would lose its S U P, would be voided if in fact, anyone tried to subdivide any part of the property, not only just the carriage house, but any other lot or parcel from the lot. We also set the S U P that the, it would limit the number of tenants and it would also keep the main houses a single family, just to make sure that that was protected. We also wanted to point out that even though the staff report recognized that there were other properties that were similar, even the staff report's chart recognized that there were very, very few that were actually in similar square footage of this carriage house or any of all that were on a three-lot property that could possibly have two lots sold off of it. And we recognize that it's not a hundred percent guarantee to offer this incentive. However, we find that in general, most people do what their incentive to do. Most of us go to work even on bad days because we're being paid. So we do feel like the incentive is a long-term opportunity to keep the properties united. So we also wanted to let you know that we have quite a bit of neighborhood support. We have over a hundred and twenty-one signatures, including a hundred percent of our block except for one component. Over fifteen people, over ten percent of our signatures are within a one-block radius. So they're very close and they are in fact, people that are impacted. And over twenty percent of our signatures are either in the one-block radius or actually on our street. So we recognize that our neighbors wanted some way to preserve this property for future generations to enjoy and that it wouldn't end up as three separate homes in some way.
Thank you. Is there, is there someone else who's speaking in favor of this? If you can line up, get the clock going, so if you can line up, it's going to save
Good evening. My name is Kale and I've built the Ginner Park neighborhood on Melrose Avenue for twenty-one years and six months. I enjoyed living there and I found that my neighbors are very nice. The Dodsons have tried everything they can do to make it a pretty area. They have planted dogwood trees, they're out there planting grass, flowers or anything they can do. They've launched and do everything to keep the place gorgeous. And I'm upset that this situation has risen and I work at the, I work at the seminary in the life here. The Dodsons, all the, plus the carriage houses down there, have made many improvements to enhance the beauty of the, of the area. When the area came through several years ago, there were seminary students that lived in the carriage house. We had trees across the, on Melrose Avenue and at that time, I worked for a little bank. You could not get to work because the seminary students came out of carriage house and lived in those trees. And by the time I got home that night, I was able to drive my car. So I'm just telling you that the people that have lived in the carriage house have been wonderful people and I just hope that you approve of our solution that they have requested. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, President Graziano, members of the council. My name is Ned Lawrence. I'm president of the Ginner Park Residents Association. I'm here representing our board, which supports the S U P. When Union Seminary sold this property in 2002, it recognized the problem of selling a thousand-square-foot house with a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot accessory building. They knew correctly that the neighborhood would never support a special use permit for that property as a standalone multifamily dwelling. Their solution was to come up with the lot line that you have seen, creating a single-family home in a building that never was a single-family home. The question before us as a board, looking at this property, which is, was what is the best way to allow for the preservation and upkeep of the carriage house building and keep the properties united? That lot line, which is the current lot line, may meet legal requirements. However, it is absolutely not in keeping with the lots in the Ginner Park neighborhood and it destroys the historic integrity of this property, which is the last three-lot property existing in the Ginner Park. Our board feels that this is an appropriate solution. The use, while we understand different than the variance granted by the zoning appeals board in the nineteen forties is essentially the same. The special use permit lowers the density from the time when the seminary owned the property and it does not in any way change the footprint of the existing building. There have been no complaints about this property during the time when the seminary owned it nor since the Dodsons have purchased it. While we certainly acknowledge all that the Dodsons have done in renovating this house, that is absolutely not why we support this. We support this as a reasonable solution to the upkeep of a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot accessory building. I would like to also add that in terms of the seventy carriage houses, many of those buildings are actually garages. Mine is one of them. It's less than four hundred square feet and it actually had chipping poop in the second floor, not any kind of residential apartment. Some have said that it's alarmist to think that this property could have been sold with this lot line, but the fact of the matter is that the first owners after the seminary, the first owners who purchased from the seminary indeed intended to sell the house standalone with the lot line you see right there. It did not happen because the Dodsons offered to purchase both properties and their offer was accepted. But we certainly see no reason why it could not happen, again, particularly since some people argue that there is nothing wrong with that building being a single-family home with a lot that looks exactly like that. Thank you for your consideration and I hope you will support this paper.
Thank you.
Madam President Graziano, Vice President Robertson, members of council. My name is Jonathan Murdock Kitt. I live in the house due north of this property. My wife Nola and I have lived in our house for twenty-four years. The happiest day of my life in owning 3503 Seminary Avenue was when a family bought 3501 Seminary Avenue. Because we lived there since 1986 and the seminary owned it. They had some students and other folks living in the, the carriage house, but the main house was largely empty. They used it for special events, but it was empty. I used to walk around there and call the seminary regularly when I saw anything out of the order. It was a house like this, the main, the main house, of under eight thousand square feet, has to be loved. I'm not saying the seminary didn't love it. There was nobody at the seminary to love it. And unfortunately, the Presbyterians that they are, they weren't very good stewards of this piece of property. And when it was bought as a single-family house, as I said, Nola and I were the happiest we could ever have been because the family breathed life into the place. They loved it, they cared for it. One of the things you got to be concerned about is this. No one is going to buy 3501 Seminary Avenue as a mansion, eight thousand square feet, unless they can control that carriage house behind it. No one will buy that property if that carriage house were separated in any way because it is right there in their backyard. They have to control it, otherwise they wouldn't be interested in buying that. That is the only three-lot piece of property residential nature in Ginner Park. My wife and I have two lots. One of the things that I would tell you is that in the twenty-four years that we've lived there, all the time that there have been tenants in the carriage house apartment, I have never had one complaint, not about music, not parking, not anything. I know that the tenants have parked their cars on Melrose Avenue at times. I know there's a requirement for off-street parking. But the truth of the matter is the seminary uses both sides of Melrose Avenue to park cars for students and ministers and other people coming to the library either to go to school or to do research for their, their servants on Sunday. My big concern there was, oh my gosh, the fire department wouldn't like it. I want to be able to get a fire truck through there. Well, the fire department came, my wife and I said we had a concern about that. They brought the fire trucks out, cars parked on both sides of Melrose, ran, well, it's a one-way, straight from seminary eastbound out to Chatham Avenue. They ran the fire trucks through there, the biggest ones they had. Fire, the fire department said, no problem. So my objection, my concern on that apartment there was, was removed. The Dodsons have been good neighbors, the, the folks that they have rented to have been good neighbors. And I hope you heard it when somebody said it earlier, this carriage house apartment has never been used as a single-family dwelling. We know that the master plan came along long after this house was built. It was built prior to 1909. It was used originally as a carriage house. And the driver for the family that lived there lived in the carriage house. It was the seminary that converted it to four units and five bedrooms in 1949. And that's when the problem began, was when the Herzogs originally bought the place from the seminary and then the Dodsons bought the property from the Herzogs. There was a, they didn't, they didn't realize that there was a problem. And that's why we're all in front of you today about this. It's a good use to keep it multifamily. That gerrymandered sort of lot line to make it a single-family is the worst thing you can do for Ginner Park. And you have to realize that the, the master plan would involve almost taking, by taking this, this carriage house and trying to make it a single-family, but it's never been that way. I'd be happy to respond to questions, Madam President, if they are. Thank you very much.
Just remember for the next speakers that you have like a certain amount of time.
I'll be very fast. Madam President, Madam Vice President, members of council, I'm Anne Williams. I live in the next block, 3607 Seminary. I have probably not a study of carriage houses slash garages that the planning commission referred to. So I want to speak to that because a lot of the argument that's been made is that if you grant the S U P, you are setting an undue precedent that others of us might even manage of. We do have a five-car, if you will, garage. It was lived in when our house was built in 1908. I would have dreamed to ask anyone to live in this property as is. In order to keep cool, clean, appropriate, it would have to have a bathroom. There's no bathroom there. A kitchen would probably cost me a hundred thousand dollars. The return on that for me after expenses would be, if I was lucky, three thousand dollars a year, a very poor investment. As a consequence, I think that the major argument that undergirds the planning commission's recommendations to demand this, that others of us in the neighborhood will be besieging you with requests to do the same thing, is fallacious, is not economic. And the Dodson situation is totally single, not just because they only have the only three-lot property, but because the property had already been converted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
President and Vice President, members of council, my name is Robert Olbrich. I live at 3604 Chatham Avenue, about a block from the subject property. I'm primarily interested in the preservation of this property. It is a keystone of our neighborhood. The thought that you would convert a hundred-year-old carriage house into a single-family, I think is simply misguided. I would submit to you that when the master plan was approved, this property was already used, would be approved, used multifamily by the seminary. The actual wording in the master plan says, no additional multifamily development. This property was in fact, used at a lower, or at a higher density than the applicants are proposing at the time the master plan was proposed. I'm also concerned about the possibility that this lot could be further divided. You never know what people are going to do in the future and you will find people not like the Dodsons or my family that are interested in historic preservation, but would want to come in here and subdivide it. I think that is, that possibility is removed by my approval of this S U P and I would encourage you all to support it wholeheartedly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jean McCarthy and I live at 3504 Seminary Avenue, across the street from the Dodsons and down two houses. I've lived there for thirty-five years. I've raised my family, my dogs, my cats and everything else on that block. I walk it at least twice a day. I see what's going on in the neighborhood and I'm very aware of what's happening with the Dodsons property. The first thing I want to say is that I also own one of those seventy potential carriage houses that was, that were mentioned earlier. Mine consists of three sides and a roof and it's made of corrugated metal. So needn't fear, it'll be as you may, any changes for me, okay? The second thing I want to say is that The second thing I want to say is that the city, as you all know, has a campaign called As on the Street, which is for safety purposes. And I just want to reiterate that having occupancy in the carriage house with the kind of people that the Dodsons have living there is an excellent way for us to maintain eyes, not just on the street, but on the annalies and in our backyards. Because of the size of the property and of the homes in Ginner Park and because of the mature landscaping, we actually need lots of eyes. The third thing that I want to address is the historical integrity of the property. I've known the Dodsons since they moved in. They've done everything any human beings could possibly do to build that house into a key-stem property in our neighborhood. They are active on the Ginner Park Neighborhood Association. Rebecca is a key member of the board. I served on the board with her. I trust them completely to do everything within their power to maintain the historical integrity of that property. And I would submit that keeping, supporting their petition so that this becomes an essence of property that they're in charge of and that they're managing and that they're handling is to everybody's advantage who lives in Ginner Park. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam President, Madam Vice President, members of council, thank you for the opportunity and also, by the way, my friends in Ginner Park. Thank you very much for the opportunity to lightly speak in support of the special use permit. I will offer you a number of topics and I live at 3607 Seminary Avenue, which is roughly a block away. I would like to mention basically three arguments I would make in favor of granting the special use permit. The first is historical, which is one of my neighbors that I've spoken to. I want to add a little background to that. My father and his family grew up at 3,500 Seminary, which is the property across the street. Similarly, the brand is not nearly as grand as the property at 3,501, yet it also had a carriage house. And I have documentary evidence that they had folks living in the second floor of their structure from the very beginning. You have to remember that in those days, which was really basically the turn of the century, 1900, 1980, 1910, up until the depression, there were not appliances, people and servants to help them take care of properties. And these property carriage houses were used for servants and their families to provide adequate housing, which is the reason why these carriage houses had initially at least water in them, if not full bathrooms. I don't believe that the property across the street did, that a complete property of 3,500 did that, had other purposes that were necessary for a family. The second argument I would make is that the neighborhood is best served by recognizing that this is a unique property, is one of the largest houses in Ginner Park. It is an unusual property, has been used because of that, has been used for years because of its beautiful public spaces. The main residence was used by the seminary as a showplace in Ginner Park, had its regular, had its Christmas parties there. So we talk about a beautiful brand house and the carriage house is built in exactly the same style, also for granted. So I think from a historical perspective, it should be recognized as well as in the S U P granted. Thirdly, it's economically illegal. As a resident of the neighborhood, we believe that the current partition, and in fact, any partition you could imagine, would be doing a disservice to the way the Ginner Park tradition of houses are, are made. Would not have proper space for backyard, side yard, so forth. The property was subdivided, allowed to be subdivided. As it is today, it's only a unique property of its type in the more south original. In summary, I hope that you will support the S U P. I think it's one of the vast majority of our neighborhood, of my neighborhood in Ginner Park, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I, those who are listening, I'll position this favor. Leave it for...
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss that, my opinion. My name is Stacy Hall and I reside at 3411 Noble Avenue in Ginner Park. I'm in opposition to...
Stacy, can you clarify something? Can we give this the opposition 30 minutes also?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, go ahead, please.
I'm in opposition to the S U P. I was at the planning commission meeting last week when this S U P was denied. Mr. Law made some important comments that I thought I would paraphrase. He said, "This is not as complicated as it sounds. This really protects the financial investment of the current owner. It sets a precedent that some future owner could argue, successfully or not, I don't know. This case has been overblown to say this is the only way we can protect and preserve the historic nature of the property." That is just, that just clearly is not so. It is not true. And also, just from what I was hearing, I'd like to say that I have a brand-new garage that would not cost very much to convert to multifamily use. It would be tight, but it could be done. Why should you vote against the S U P? The preservation of the property as a single parcel is not guaranteed. Proposed use of this property would constitute an increase of intensity in the use. Parking, Melrose is a narrow-access street and that is already used by seminary students and employees, and now J-Serge students as well. Burden on the city. These types of apartments in Ginner Park put an added burden on trash collection, fire, police services. The city does not have the resources to monitor them for safety and code violations. The applicants can apply for a historic easement. I believe that granting this special use permit would constitute a precedent which would lead to conversion of other accessory structures in Ginner Park for multifamily use. We are discussing a decision that you are making today, 2010, which decided would have consequences for years to come. Things don't happen overnight. My neighbors and I have invested money, sweat equity, and have become involved members of the community. It has taken years to rebuild and renovate properties in Ginner Park. There is still work to be done. But make no mistake about it, homeowners are moving in, kids are attending public schools, a sense of community in Ginner Park is real. We have a lot to lose if accessory buildings start going the way of multifamily units. Immediate neighbors are not the only ones affected. This one S U P, if granted, could easily pave the way for others like it. Please oppose this request for a special use permit. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My neighbor is Lori Poole and I live at 3,500 Seminary, just directly across from the property in question. There's a number of reasons why I'm opposing this special use permit. My opposition came on the fact that the property was put on the market. And one of the things I'd like to make very clear is that there's nothing in this special use permit that will guarantee any of the things that we've heard supporters talking about. The lot could be split again. There's absolutely nothing that prevents that. It would be very hard to monitor the conditions of the special use permit, not necessarily with the current owners, but with a new owner, who I have to guess that at some point in the future, there will be new owners. The density, I think, definitely is a problem. We are looking for single-family use in the Ginner Park area. When we bought our house, there were 14 bedrooms in use by the seminary, it was used as a dorm. I'm quite certain that if I had come here or come to the Ginner Park Residents Association and proposed continued use of even some of those bedrooms, I'd have been shot down immediately. The idea is we're buying these homes to restore them to single-family. I do not understand why multifamily use of a carriage house is considered more historical than single-family. I don't understand that concept. And given the fact that it leads to density, that it leads to possible owners who aren't tied into the community as strongly as people actually living there, I can't see how multifamily is going to be a better historical use of a property that was once used for family. Precedent here is a big issue. I understand that some of the 70 properties identified by staff are small. They were identified because of their footprint, that they had a footprint big enough to accommodate what's considered a legal rental, I guess. But I can personally attest that 28, there are at least 28 accessory buildings in the surrounding areas, not just on seminary, on Hawthorne, on Noble, on some of the other streets, that are 1,000 square feet plus. They are all two-story. Some of them are already inhabited with tenants. And some of the supporters of the S U P own those houses that are currently house tenants. I can speak that my carriage house is certainly big enough to convert into multifamily. It's about the same size as the housing question. I could argue that going from 14 students in the main house to two apartments in my carriage house would be not so bad. We also own a house on Hawthorne Avenue. It has an accessory building that's approximately 1,600 square feet. It has a bathroom. It has everything but a kitchen. It has several egress. It is bordered by an apartment building. These are all arguments I could make and come to you and say, why can't I get a special use permit too? Primarily, I cannot see a reason for making a special exception here. The applicants have recourse, there are other uses for the building. If indeed they were misled as to whether or not the property was legal or not, there should be legal resources. A special use permit should not be used as a tool to remedy a situation like that. And again, I want to emphasize that while there are conditions on the permit, the property has been used as apartments for seven years without it coming to anyone's notice. So oversight is clearly a problem. There's going to be very little way we can monitor the conditions. For these reasons and others that you'll hear from other people, I ask that you deny the...
Madam President, Madam Vice President, members of council, good evening. It's good to see you again. My name is Charlie Eardor and I live in the fan district, so I don't have a dog directly in this hunt, if you will, but I think it always deserves to. I think, looking at this case, that this case has got some spillover effect that could come to each of your districts. There are buildings, outbuildings in each of your districts that could bring these, that owners could bring cases very similar to this case as the years go on. The Dodsons have done a wonderful job rehabilitating the property, I'm sure. And I'm sure they're great owners. But when I've gone to the border zoning bills or come before this body itself and ask for the similar actions that these folks are looking for, I've always been asked, what happens after you, Charlie? What happens after you sell the property? This is the argument I think you have to look at before making a judgment tonight. It's not about the Dodsons. It's about the real estate itself. Who buys that real estate from the Dodsons is the question. Who buys real estate after those folks? And who is going to be responsible, as the Dodsons have been, in keeping up the property, in making sure that only four or five people live there? Staff has already reported to you this evening that they're not, they don't have the manpower to look after certain items. Who's going to make sure that we have the manpower? You? To look after that they don't load it up or they don't talk people in there? I'm concerned not about this property specifically. I'm concerned about what happens in fan district and other parts of the city as it acknowledges this decision. It is my point that you all here tonight are making precedent. That has been up for argument all day with discussions out ahead of the council members. I think if it is precedent, you're sitting here this evening, and I would ask that you either deny the S U P or continue this paper so that neighborhood associations throughout the city might meet and discuss the ramifications of this case. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Brode. I've lived in Ginner Park for 30 years. A lot of great things have happened in that 30 years. Our property values were depressed when I moved in. They're much higher now. We've got a school in the neighborhood. We have young families moving in. It's a delightful area and I do not want to slip back to that of approving this request. This is about the future owners, as gentlemen have said. A future owner buys in hard times and if he can't maintain it, then we've got a problem. If he can't afford to keep up the house like the Dodsons, if he can't manage the apartments, the city doesn't have the resources, as it was referred to. And the city can't tell how many people are in these apartments. The landlord owning this house also has restrictions about gaining access. He can't just walk in and catch people in the apartment. So there's a concern about that. One of the big issues I see is the planning commission on Monday voting this down for very strong reasons. It was, they were careful to ask all the questions, the, many of the issues that the people for it went away. And my concern is that we're overriding, from political reasons, this decision by the professionals. They thoroughly met it. They asked the questions and unfortunately, I don't believe any of that got passed forward to you council people, except by Mr. Crawford, who's the chairman. With the S U P, there is no control over how many, as I've said, live in the apartments. The planning commission also said they would not permit additional S U Ps if they had voted it. And in fairness, the council will have to override the next person who comes and is turned down by the planning commission if we're going to do what we did in the land use committee. And that greatly concerns me. After all, it was acknowledged in the planning commission that the neighbor next door rents. So I see if we're going to vote for it, we should vote for them to rent as well. This is a neighborhood issue. Few in Ginner Park actually know, I know they've got together a large group, but we have 2,100 residents in the neighborhood. I would venture to say 75% do not know about this. Our Ginner Park paper, until several days before the planning commission, would not send a notice out. And they sent a notice out and had a little meeting and our request. However, they would not allow the opposition to speak. So it's, it seems that that wouldn't happen, but it did happen. That's why, in their Ginner Park letter, the details are sketchy. And, you know, when you're talking about a strong issue like this, you need to provide information on both sides. And that way, the chips will fall where they are. This property is not unique, as has been told. I mean, as I mentioned, the property decided is a state home. There are others, and I don't see us rewarding the applicants because of that. The special use permit adds value to this property. Now, the company has already tried to sell. And I personally expect them to turn around and try to sell it again, or try to sell if you live in a successful place. In other words, once they get this, the value will greatly enhance and allow them to find a buyer. And... And I see them flipping the property. I mean, after all, they've only lived in the community for seven years. Mr. Rosio, I appreciate your removing this from the consent agenda and giving this property a new life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President. Councilman, my name is Robert Kimmel, and I live with my wife, Lori, at 3,500 Seminary Avenue, across the street from this property. One of the unfortunate things that I've noticed in serving the city from the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals is that there are cases that sometimes divide neighborhoods. This is one of them, and it's unfortunate. This case is not about the Dodsons. They've had wonderful people, and they've done a magnificent job with a nice piece of property. What this case is about is the fact that we have rules that we have to live by. They talk about the property being used since 1949. This property has never been used as multifamily in a lawful manner. Seminary was allowed to use the property educationally used only. That was the special exception that was allowed by the board of zoning appeals in 1949. That doesn't make it multifamily. They were restricted to having students in that property, not multifamily. In 2002, when the seminary decided that they would sell this property, the Engage Services were very fine in law firms. They went to the city and they asked the city, "What can we do with this property?" And the city told them, first and foremost, "You have to remove those four units before you can do anything." They did in fact decide that they would divide this property into two pieces because the lot size is large, it's an acre and a half, and it has enough square footage or lot area in order to create two single-family units. Seminary thought that was the best way to try to maximize the dollars that they could get from the property. They passed along the obligation to remove those four units to the buyer. Unfortunately, Seminary didn't follow the rules that the zoning administrator gave to them in May 2002. The buyer for the seminary didn't follow the rules. And when the Dodsons bought the property, they either inadvertently or not chose to use that as multifamily. It's never been used legally as multifamily. When they started using that in 2003, it was illegal use. They got state tax credits, federal tax credits, and they got city a banquet on their taxes when they did that. Your staff who's working tonight and also at the planning commission has told you and told the planning commission that this special use permit does not meet even the first criteria of the special use permit. I know that you're all familiar with you, and it says it has to meet six criteria. The first of which is that it not be detrimental to the neighborhood. Your staff tells you this is detrimental to the neighborhood. Why? Why is it detrimental? It's detrimental because the master plan that was established in the year 2000 said in the North District, "If you have the opportunity to reduce the multifamily uses of property in the North District, it should be done." This is exactly that opportunity. It should have been done in 2002. The zoning administrator advised the seminary that it should be reduced to one family. They didn't do it. The buyer didn't do it. The end did the Dodsons. I am familiar with the special use permit process in a number of ways. First, for 37 years, I've been aware of use of term. I've presented before this council before as representing people who ask for a special use permit. I've also served on your board of zoning appeals and your planning commission, and I see special use permits every month as a member of that planning commission. And I understand that one of the most important things that needs to be taken into account is what does the district representative, what does the council person for that district think of this particular special use permit? And that's particularly important when it affects only that district. But this case doesn't affect just that district. It affects the Fader. It affects Churchill. It affects the West End. It affects the South Side. And that's why I ask you to use your independent judgment in making a decision on a case that has citywide implications. It has importance not just for Ginner Park. It has importance for the city of Richmond as a whole. Your planning commission, and I will tell you that I refused myself and did not participate in the planning commission hearing, had a long and very, very straightforward hearing before it, which lasted far longer than this case. And they voted five to two in opposition to the special use permit. So you have your staff saying, "Please deny." You have your planning commission saying, "Please deny." You have the opponents that have spoken to you tonight, and additional 61 people on our petition who say, "Please deny." The one thing that the applicant could have done in this special use permit to guarantee that this lot would never have been split would be to put a deed restriction that says from time forward, this lot cannot be split. They won't do that. I ask you to consider that. This case is important not only because the people that have come before you tonight that oppose this have appeared before you. This is important for the entire city. This is important for the independent judgment of the nine council persons who sit and make judgment on special use permits. Special use permits are a very important aspect of this council's power. It should be used judiciously. It should be used in only those sets of circumstances that are very creative and very narrow. And I would submit to you, because of the precedental effect that this can have on the city of Richmond, this is not a special use permit that should be granted. This is a special use permit that should be denied. Thank you very much.
I bring this back to council discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an issue that has taken a lot of time and a lot of study. Because I was worried about precedent, it was set not only in Northside, but throughout the city. A lot of immigrant families, Jackson, Carver, were, heritage, were used for multifamily housing against the law from basically 1924 forward. And I think that one of the things I have to look at is the history in this case. There isn't really a way to keep the property as one, except for this pool side with the deed restriction of perhaps some sort of easement. But apart from that, none is going to put the property back together again for a activity. And I think it is important to keep the storage structures, separate though they may be by distance, on the same property. Then I'm thinking about the perception of precedent and whether or not this would form a role or be the exceptional tool. To use this as a precedent, I think you have to convince whatever council is hearing a case similar to this in the future, that it was number one, only, that it was a institutional housing use prior to it becoming multifamily, and that a restriction on the S U P is that only one person per veteran is allowed to live there. I think you also have to consider whether or not it was egress for automobile on and off the property. As the property is divided right now, you can see there is no automobile egress coming from the divided property. You'd have to consider whether or not it would be a total number of residents on the property as this one does. You'd have to consider whether or not it has neighborhood association support for this one. Whether or not it's next to a multifamily unit of this premise. Whether or not it's on a parcel or a land, marginal, a basic parcel. Whether or not the total land in division is three original parcels. And whether or not the master plan objects to it. Now, certainly, future S U Ps may have some of those criteria, but as I look at this, I do not believe my instinct of one, it has all eight of those issues. Specifically, I've been smart and informed us that this is the only house that they're aware of that was a carriage house, used as institutional housing. And I think that that's something we have to take serious consideration. The next density, yes, there is density problems throughout the city. Either it's too low or too high, depending on where you are. And I know that if somebody wants to convert a carriage house to a mansion, I would more than likely be against it. If it did not have a very good reason for removing it. Here, 1949, 2002, it had institutional housing use, which is not the same as multifamily. However, the restrictions put in place by this S U P keep those density numbers exactly what they've been for over 60 years. It reduces the number of people, I think, in total veterans, including the big ass, from 14 to 10, I'm not mistaken. It does protect the parcel software, requires that they both be joined together within 60 days. If the applicant does not do that, they lose their S U P. It can't happen. If anybody in the future wants to divide this and sell off the multifamily unit on this property, they can certainly divide the property, but again, the S U P is gone and they're back to a single family. Obviously, I'm not a fan of the shape of the parcel. That's not a consider one way or the other, however good it is. I do like that this S U P encourages grocery parking, and it is about as unique a situation as I have. But one thing that I think is a really good point that the first I brought up is they can't think about this based on whether or not the Dodsons are using the right. You have to think about it about whatever villain is going to purchase the property next, and what they're going to try to do about it. And I think the property owners in this case have addressed this concern, five restrictions they put in their S U P.
Sure.
They could have done more. I would rate your bet that if it were more minutes for S U P to look at, we could do more to protect it, we could do less to protect it. But I think they've done what they can to make sure that this is protected. If this was just a situation where the Dodsons bought an apartment building attached to their house by a parcel, and it was a legal purpose, I would have no problem voting against it, telling them to convert to a single-family move on. If I thought this was going to set a precedent throughout the city as far as feasibility of creating parcel, excuse me, creating carriage house housing in other neighborhoods, I'd vote against this. That's not the case here. And if the neighborhood association favored this, plus the reasons I stated, I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Ms. Carter.
I feel I need to clarify some things here, basically. You know, I serve on planning, also the chairman, Lane, just a minute. And when we first heard this, the planning, or Mr. Gilbert, excuse himself, I had no idea he had anything to do with this, or was so passionately involved with this particular S U P. And I had kind of got a touch with Mr. Gilbert on his thoughts about it ahead of time. I could not get a touch with Mr. Gilbert. I did not have an idea of how, which thoughts were. And I went into the first meeting thinking that I would just abstain. I wouldn't say anything, I'd let you hear more back now. But as it went on further, you know, everything they said seemed reasonable to me. The property was kept up very, very well. It had a lot of community support, so I voted for the special permit. The second time I came to planning, we heard it the second time. At that point, I still had not heard back from Mr. Gilbert. And with that in mind, I really didn't have anything to hang my hat on, so that time, I voted against the special permit. From that point, it moved on to land use. We got to land use, Mr. Gilbert came down, and he spoke to it with his support. And I felt like as a council person, I really get to go with a council person on this. He knows his neighborhood, he knows what's going on. And, you know, frankly, I honestly feel it's a good, it's a good S U P. I don't see this being replicated across the country, much less our city. So tonight, I stand to support this for Mr. Gilbert in the books down there.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. The comments? Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, I am. I, I've heard these arguments, I have the notion that we would be setting the precedent. We run that risk every time we vote on the S U P. What we are making are exceptions. That's what S U Ps are for, in this case. Whether we vote yea or nay, there are people in that unit, and people in that unit for 50 years. They could be in there for another 50 years. I don't know whether it'll make a dime worth of difference in that neighborhood unless we anticipate some kind of influx of heathens paying that kind of rate. That typically doesn't happen. Typically doesn't happen. Those who live there as a consequence of an institution allow them to live there. As they were at the time, or allowing the institution. That institution used to be bustin'. I'm in Virginia Union, just a few blocks away from it. I remember that building being bustin' there, far more active than it is now. And no, I know we're talking about living conditions, but in terms of people in the neighborhood, parking cars, going to class, and what have you, it seems to me that neighborhood is far better shaped now than it was a few short years ago because the institution has evolved, evolved. That said, I'm going to support the paper, and I'm not necessarily moved by this notion of precedent, we're going to create some kind of an avalanche of this same kind of activity. Whether we've got seven units or 28 units, as I think I probably didn't know, but I have here, of other carriage houses. What we need to do is revisit our master plan, our comprehensive plan that I understand we are each five years behind on revising. And these arguments can be fought out back in that process. And we could sort of live it in the bud once and all. In the meantime, the only instrument that we've got is a special use permit, which indeed is special. This lot, this property up here is to be special indeed. And I think I just voted for it now, and we'll take the rest of it up later.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. The guys?
Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. This is Mr. Furze in the third councilman district. This is, he's my neighbors. The regular, pardon me, you've got my Asian neighbors. But nonetheless, folks that I'll run into grocery store and other places, and so this isn't a decision that I take lightly, or one that should be taken lightly by anyone. The fact is that this ordinance, I don't know if supported for the following reasons. One, it supports the historic character of this house. This is a grand home, as you've heard, over 8,000 square feet in the main house and over 2,800 square feet in the carriage house. Merging these lots is the right thing to do. Now, that carriage house is bigger than most single-family houses in the city, including my own. The issue of lotting properties is pervasive in our city. And we heard at the land use meeting a terrible description of conditions on a particular street on another other street of illegal uses of prime, of lot, etc. street or on another intersection of illegal uses, of crime, of light, et cetera. And I'm thinking to myself, so many of the property owners there, these are all units, and they probably are, are living next door to these properties. I get reports all the time of lotted properties in the district, and I write these folks a letter, the owner of the property, letting them know that my office has received complaints about them. Not once, not one time, has anyone lived near or right next door to these lotted properties. As a matter of fact, on a lot of occasions, they live out of state, they live out of the region, they live out of the city. And unfortunately, our laws in Virginia do not allow us to pursue people that live out of state. And this is, this is a difficult situation with light. And so, to me, any owner of this property, future owners of this property, anyone, will have the incentive to make sure that the residents of this carriage house are doing right by the community. And I cannot see where it would be in their interest to ignore this property as so many owners of lotted properties do. There's no evidence that the applicant knew these prescriptions. So this isn't a case of somebody skirting the rules, putting it in everyone's face, and then asking for forgiveness once something comes around. These are folks who, I believe, tried to do the right thing, and once it was pointed out, had tried to go through the system. None of the neighbors that live in this block, excuse me, in 3500 block of seminary, opposed this S U P. Excuse me, the neighbors to the immediate south are the seminary. There's double-digit support in the block south of seminary, as well as the 3600 block of seminary. The board of the residents' association voted to support this S U P. They also declared, or excuse me, called a special meeting about this matter. Now, some argue that the notice on that was inadequate, but I don't recall in the 14 years that I had lived in Gennepark, if the association's ever called a meeting about an S U P. The board always takes a position on it, but nonetheless, this was an open meeting. Members of the association received a detailed explanation of the board's actions, a newsletter which goes out to all members, and in some cases, not all, and I don't know about this particular issue, but in some cases, all the residents of Gennepark. And I was, I was at that special meeting. And I want to, I want to thank Ms. Mark for her involvement in this, because she came on a Sunday afternoon to present at this, at this meeting, which we and others in this department were kind with me on these issues. And these are not easy issues. They are indeed difficult. I ranked this right up there in the top three of issues that I've had to face since I was on council. The fact is, this is not about me. This is about the people in this neighborhood and the future residents of Gennepark. A wonderful place. And if I believed this was indeed setting precedent for the community, I would have extreme difficulty in supporting this S U P. But if there ever was property that was unique, this is it. How many properties owned institutionally, used as multifamily, and then were given approval back in 1949, they could have used it for other purposes, but nonetheless, this is what it was used, how it was used. This grand home with this large carriage house on its property, there's just a very, very short list of properties that can claim these unique aspects. The fact is that we attempted to look at, seeing if we could limit this to just, excuse me, expand this special use permit to say that we wouldn't consider this for other properties that didn't meet these circumstances. But the law won't allow us to do that. Special use permits by right or by law aren't limited to just that property. We can't cure all of the ills of the city or wipe out any foreseeable contingencies in the future with a special use permit. I'm going to have to rely on the judgment of future councils to make sure that this doesn't happen. But I will say that I want to thank very clearly, in minutes of this meeting, that this is not to be looked upon as the gate is wide open and everybody come down and fill out a special use permit application. So that's not what this does. And I'll do what I can to judge special use permits on their own merit and not look back, we've done this with this property, et cetera. This is a special use permit. And while I appreciate the work of the staff, we always can agree. And I respect the people who oppose the special use permit. They are good people who have invited me into their home and people who have come to mind them. This is a difficult decision. But again, this isn't about me, it's about this neighborhood, and I hope that after this is over, that we as a neighborhood, Gennepark, can come back together and put this behind us. And so I ask my colleagues to see me to vote to support this special use permit to allow our neighborhood to begin. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilber. And before I go off to vote, I want to thank you. This is a very emotional issue. I want to thank all the people from Kingdell here to speak to this and pay to help this neighborhood come back together after this vote. Madam President, please hold. The voting on, I remember mine. Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Hilber?
Aye.
Vice President Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Joe?
Aye.
Mr. Milt?
Aye.
Mr. Shannon?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
Vice President Rosio?
Aye.
And they present the next. Thank you, Madam President. And we proceed to the next paper, page number 41, as of 10/03. And that, page number 41.